And it makes two other changes to make it entirely consistent with the state law. The state law doesn't allow defense and indemnification when there's intentional recklessness or wrongdoing. For whatever reason, that also threw in maliciousness, which is the same as intentional recklessness, or gross negligence, which is the same as recklessness. So this just claims it makes it closer, like word for word, the state law, which is what governs. It substitutes New York State provision on punitive damages. New York State presumes you're not entitled to punitive damages. You are in certain respects. Irvington comes the opposite way and says you are covered for punitive damages, but not yet. So it makes the Irvington law match the state law, which it does anyway because of that provision I read to you in the first place. What this does is eliminate the confusing provisions in Section 19. Sorry, it's one explanation, though.
Very clear. That's good. Is that really? That's good. Again.
Do we provide more coverage or less coverage at this point? More indemnity or less with the change?
The same. The same, because the state law said that governs. You know, when there's any, in terms of procedure and stuff, the village law governs and, you know, just how do you make the determination whether it was within the scope of duty and stuff like that? That's fine. It's the substantive provision. And if you didn't have that one provision at the very end that says if the state gives you more coverage, the state governs, well, then you would say the state was more generous than Irvington. But it's the same for me.
So we're eliminating an inconsistency within the actual laws?
Yeah, and what I see is a big confusion. And in fact, in the past, has been a source of a lot of confusion. Fortunately, that'll watch, doesn't come up much, but when it did come up, it was confusing.
Just for clarification, indemnification would include any settlement, right?
Yes.
So, okay.
And we're now in line with both the other communities in Westchester in specifying that we're following the state.
Yeah, I did look at that before I, you know, mainly, I started looking at the other ones to say, wait, to see whether they had that provision that says in the situation of the sort of savings clause. And they didn't have the savings clause, but they never had this thing, this provision that you couldn't be violating any state law or kind of, because there could be some uncertainty with law, you know, we don't have.
We're announcing a hearing.
Correct. Yeah, I was just thinking, Larry, since I'm not going to be here on February 22nd, we should move it to March 5th, which is, you know, because it is an application law, so that's the most.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing to consider local law in Chapter 19, the Vincent Indemnification of the Village Code, from March 5th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Village Hall. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next up, we have correspondence from Lucinda Stoll.
Thank you.
Great. All right.
Thank you. My name is Lucinda Stoll. I'm an architect, and I represent Julia Steinmetz, who's purchased 16 North Astro Place. We have an application before the planning board to, this is 16 North Astro Place, is it? We have an application before the planning board to change the use of the upper two floors of the building. They're now used as office space, and we would like to change it to two apartments, which would considerably lessen the parking stress, I think, on the, this area, because it would only be two apartments, and we required to have three parking spaces for those two apartments, one handicapped and two regular. We would like to provide those two spaces inside the building. As you can see here, this is the plan of the building. We're proposing that we would have the parking be in the back of the first floor of the building. At some previous time in history, this was a driveway into the building, and there is an existing curb cut in the sidewalk out to North Astro Street. The curb cut has had a parking space striped in front of it at some point, and so we are requesting the removal of that one parking space so that we can access the curb cut, reactivate the driveway, and provide three parking spaces within the building for the two apartments that we're proposing on the second and third floors. The first floor of the building will remain retail of some sort. There are two spaces here and here, and then the entrance to the apartments would be here in the middle. And this driveway space would, as I said, be reactivated and would become a access to, and it would look something like this if. The architectural review board likes what we have proposed.
Do we, do we have any history on when the, it was, I guess, the garage doors filled in or anything?
No, I don't.
I think it's one of the questions I have. I think there's a, there's a dumpster there as well right now?
Yes, that was from the previous owner. That would go away. Yeah. And we're planning to bring all the utilities in underground, so the coned wires and the exposed utility connections would all disappear.
So how many, do you have any idea, estimation, how many, shutting down the two offices or the two floors of offices?
The two floors of offices, yeah.
Yeah. How many bodies is that? How many employer, employees is that? Just a estimate.
I think you're supposed, I think it's something like 100 square feet per, per parking space required for office use, where, I have that written down. We have.
Were you going to a quantitative, I was, you know, to the code, I was just.
Thirty-something versus three is basically where we are.
I was actually interested in the real world impact was how many people were actually working there.
Well, it was a call center, and it was a very, the.
So it was populated?
Yes.
Okay.
There was part of the lower floor was a warehouse, it seemed. They had shelves and things like that, very unfinished space, but the two upper floors had offices and a call center and were set up with desks and very populated. I have photos of it, if you'd like to see it.
No, I'm just interested, so there would definitely be a net change in.
Yes.
The amount of car parking requirement.
Yes.
Not just by code, but by reality of what was going on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So that, yeah, I've been by there. I think I heard you at the planning board meeting, that I happened to be there and saw more extensive discussion, but it, you know, unless I'm missing something, it seems like a win-win for the village if cars are inside off the street and something that was one spot is, is gone, but the curb is already cut. It's physically cut already.
Correct.
So on the surface of it, I see no problem not to support it.
So, so we're giving up a public spot.
Correct.
To gain three private spots.
Correct.
So were we looking to make a decision here tonight? What would be the process?
What, what would they look to get from the, from the trustees?
It is on Broadway.
On Broadway, that was the other one.
Walkout, walkout, yeah, and we did, I, you know, I guess just a resolution telling the planning board you're okay with that, you know, I mean, and then, well, not only telling the planning board you're okay, but just so the village is okay. There's no, like, formal process that we've got in the code or anything, but since the board is in charge of the streets and in charge of parking, you would just say, we're okay with that.
And we're pretty confident we do, with just that one spot being out there.
Yes, because the spots are angled, so the way it would approach coming from Main Street would, we would be benefiting from the angle of the first car, I think.
We probably did a resolution on the others. I think it's good to do a resolution, just so you've got a record of it.
So should we prepare something for the next meeting?
If the board's ready, I can prepare the next meeting. The board's okay with that.
Have we, I mean, have we asked Ed's initial opinion or anything on this? Maybe, maybe we just do that before.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think there, that he has really an opinion in this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Controversial at the planning board.
Right.
There's a, there's a lot more that's going to happen.
Oh, yes.
Before the board.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
But it was, it was really sort of, it was a threshold issue.
Decision.
Because if, if they can't get their parking space, they can't, they have the building set up this way. So it wasn't threshold issue. That's why I suggested that they come and make sure it was okay before the board first. There's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Yes.
Yeah, so to be perfectly clear, we're only involved at this point because it's a public street we're talking about.
Exactly.
Correct.
This does not in any way interfere with the architectural review board or planning board processes.
And you know you've got a long.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very aware.
The resolution would just be that the board approves, you know, the return of curb cut to.
Right. And I take it too, by putting a resolution on the next agenda, if anyone has strong feelings against this, we'll hear from them.
Yeah.
I don't anticipate it.
Have you ever heard it either?
I won't be here, so, God bless.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Any public comments? If you've got cool architectural drawings?
Hi there.
How are you?
I have no drawings.
You have to paint a picture.
Next time.
All right.
I'm Ann Altman, and I would like to just address the, the time of year. We have about three weeks until the leaf blowing season starts again, and I was very happy that we were able to get the resolution passed so that we have some protections for the upcoming brigades. But I just wanted to recap the last season with my experience and see how we could do As I'm really happy that I'm able to talk to you as, as village trustees and mayor, I just want to remind everyone that the government is to, here to protect the common good, right? Not the business, the private sector, but the common good. Most of our complaints have been about the health, comfort, safety of the inhabitants, including myself and my family, but also those workers who are using gas leaf blowers. So I won't get into what is already fact, that they are just unhealthy for everyone, but also the environment and the topsoil, and it affects everything, bees, butterflies, food supply, it goes on. But when we passed the law, I was away for a couple of weeks over the summer. When I returned, I didn't notice a difference in the amount of landscaping companies that I heard on a daily basis. So the activists and I thought we should be calling them in as it was stated in the law, so that if people were fined, then there would be repercussions and they wouldn't do it. So I called the police three times with my name, because I was confident that something would, you know, I had nothing to hide. And they, the police would say, there was nobody there. You know, this is very hard to enforce, because as soon as the police can track down the offending company, they put it in the truck. Now, I've been living in Irvington now three and a half years. I know what a gas leaf blower sounds like. I know more about it than I think anyone in this town, for better or worse. But on September 11th, the same company that comes and does a lot of things up in Jaffray Park came to do work with the, the gas leaf blowers, and the backyard was covered in exhaust that was so thick, it was like, like a fire. So I called, and, and then an officer showed up at my door, and she said, did you call about the leaf blowers? And I said, yes. And then she said, did you call the landscaping company? And I said, yes. And did you call the homeowner? You know, contact them? Yes, because I would never first call the police. I let them know for a couple of weeks, this is the new law, and the police said, that's harassment. So she said, what will you do when it happens again? Now, here I have my toddler on my hip. I have a life, too. I don't really, but go around, like, calling and counseling people. And she, she said, well, what will you, will you do when it happens again? And I said, I guess nothing. So I'm appealing to you as, as folks in a position of power here, maybe we can help this go a little smoothly again in a couple of weeks, as educating not just the police on what the laws are, because the loopholes are several. One company, which Larry, this is your company, they use lots of generous ways to get around the law, where it's, you can't use two gas leaf blowers on properties, you know, greater than one and a half acre, or whatever it exactly is. He uses four, he counts four houses as one property. That's not, that's not following the law. So if we could all maybe lead by example, would be great as a trustee. If there's any conflict of interest, maybe don't vote on it. But this is, this is a serious quality of life issue. It affects not just me, but it affects the man using these machines. It's a human issue. We have to tell our landscapers and our, what, what we would like to see, them using healthy equipment, because they think that's what you want. And if you're not home, then you, you can't oversee any negligence or any responsibility. But that's where I can come in and help you, because I can tell you, who do you want to know who comes on what day and what hour? Because I've got video, and I have photographs, and I've talked to these people, and I've talked to these companies, and they have to do it all day, you know? So if Irvington can have a comprehensive plan that includes something about sustainable lawn care, because right now it's laughable. It's kind of embarrassing, because we want to talk about Irvington being a really wonderful, walkable village that's beautiful, and keep it within its, you know, historic charm and all this, but you can't do that with 90 to 100 decibels of people blowing this stuff in your face. It's absolutely impossible. You just can't have it both ways. So I'd like, if everybody could just listen to how nice it sounds right now and, and all the different birds, like, we have a lot of birds coming to the feeders, and it's the future. You know, other town, I'm glad we finally got this going, but it, it's got to keep going. Gruener. So I'll, I look forward to some progress. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
We'll respect North Continet Street. I too share Ann's concern, and actually, we didn't coordinate on this, but, so the pervasiveness of the sound, the pollution, the, the lack of enjoyment of our village with these gas leaf blowers, it concerns me, disturbs me, and there's so many people that share this same feeling. A lot of people work from home. You heard all the arguments when we put the ordinance in, and by the way, it really is so terrific that we were able to take that step. I did see a little bit of improvement this summer. It wasn't as pervasive as it had been other seasons. But what concerns me is the enforcement, and I think that we need to make headway on the registering landscapers, so I wondered if I could have an update on that, and I apologize if I missed it, but that, I think, will help with our enforcement and making sure that the police are familiar. And I'm going to accuse a homeowner who calls of harassing, you know, that's, it's so harassing to hear this gas leaf blower sound and breathe the fumes and see the crap being kicked up, you know, it's, we need to do better. We need to keep working on it, and we need some great headway, and I think that we need to kind of work on the enforcement, the registration. Education would be important, too, and there are not a lot of landscapers who sort of specialize in more healthy, sustainable lawn care, but there, if they had an educational component to the registration, in addition to saying that they'd have to adhere to our leaf blower law and sound ordinance and all that, perhaps we could have an educational program, which actually Greenwich, Connecticut just rolled out one, and I have the card of a person who is doing that work to educate landscapers in a better way, which is a healthier way for them and for our communities. So thank you for listening to this. It probably feels like ad nauseam, but we made headway, and we need to continue to make more to increase our quality of life.
I just wanted to make two observations, one which is specifically about the enforcement issue. I mean, you know, we had talked at the time of the difficulty of realizing there's going to be difficulty getting people, the police to be able to be out there on time. It's so easy to put a device away before you even, you know, you see the car coming down the street. You can just put it in the back of the van, and then where's the evidence at that point? So it's a very hard enforcement situation, but what we did say looking forward is that we, as a board, I think we were pretty committed to looking at sunsetting the gas appliances by the end of this year. So I think, you know, and that couples into my mind with the need for public education, because both, right now, we have an immediate educational issue, but we also have an educational issue to make sure the landscapers realize that after, whatever the period is in the fall this year, you know, there's not going to be another option, and so it's time to start really doing their product research to see what's out there. But in terms of public education, I just wanted to mention that not only do we have to reach out to the landscapers themselves, but too often, you get caught in the bind where the landscapers say, well, this is what the clients want, right? So we also have to dislike with the leaf mulching, we have to reach out to the client, to all the neighbors in some mechanism where it's ongoing. I wish the GPTF was more functional at this point than it is, but, you know, they did take a lead with the Love and Leave 'Em program to get a lot of, over a course of several years, to get public education to both the landscapers and the residents. So we need some, some kind of effort like that. Anyways, I'd like to be able to, I'm sort of just extemporaneous right now, but we should talk about this maybe during a work session and try to see a way through to getting some, leverage on some outreach.
Larry, have we had any registrations or?
We're just rolling that out right now.
It's going to be this year, I think, right now.
Oh, it, yeah, it should be right now.
Right.
And we'll be rolling that out. We have a list of landscapers we had previously contacted to make sure, and then.
It's not going to be a big help, because I think that, you know, let's say, you have an hypothetical example, they put away their leaf blowers, but they come every Tuesday to, you know, so-and-so's house, you know, we can kind of say, well, we know that that's so-and-so's registered. It's much easier once you kind of know who the players are, and if they're not a player, then they, you know, they get fined easily.
Well, they should definitely, as part of the registration process, they should sign off a checkbox that says, we've read the village regulations.
That's what the law says.
You know, you made a nice summary, that's sheet, that's pretty simple to go through, and I think at that point, there's kind of no excuse, but there's still a proof issue.
I agree with you, Mark. When was the sunset setting supposed to happen? I mean, we can do this in a work session, but I was just trying to remember.
By the end of the year.
By the end of this year.
That would be at the end of the fall season, then. It would be the last time that the gas leaf blower is going to be used. I'm sure there's going to be some exception for municipal exceptions and that kind of thing, but because there were.
Work session. Good idea.
Any other comments?
And thank you for bringing that stuff up, because we really do need to have the visibility of what's going on.
Those who move on to consent agenda, you have any questions on this? Larry, you pointed out one thing to me, the appointment of the Assistant Building Inspector is not a new hire, it's actually kind of formalizing, and she passed the thing, so she passed the civil service test, and now she's being provisionally appointed. If there's any questions, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. If I can, a second?
A second.
All in favor? I will open a public hearing, consider local law, I'm in Chapter 217, water of the Irvington Code, to clarify certain provisions. If I can, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Not the sexiest of roads you've ever ridden.
Another law, the local law is clarifying, the law is already on the books, right now, it's the law and the practice to require the owner of property to maintain the service, they have to install and then maintain the service line from the village water main to the point of use, and it's just adding that language. Right now, it says on labor material and equipment to install the service line and maintain was added, then it's, then the practice. And then the other one is the provision on, on leaks and repairing leaks, it was a little horrible, so it was just fixed somehow. It reads, leak, if it passes, will be, leaks that may develop in the service line shall be repaired promptly by the owner. If not repaired within two days after notification by the village, the village shall be authorized to shut off the service line until repairs are made. Again, that's a practice, it's just clarification there, Mark.
We talked about this briefly at a work session. You have any comments?
No, it was just, we didn't know about Tarrytown and its issues with the water bill that's having, where was that reading? Was it in one of the newspapers, or was it online? Anyways, recently, and, you know, they ran into a lot of problems, because their water system has a lot of leaks.
Yeah, we had similar, similar with somebody here in Chicago.
Yeah, exactly, and they have quite, quite a slope to go up to clean that up. They have a large, obviously, a larger water system, and some places probably older. But, yeah, so what if we could do to eliminate leaks?
Yeah, because one of the big things, the obvious environmental ones, is that any water that leaks, we actually pay for, because it's not metered, so. The village itself pays for it.
Whereas if it's your irrigation system leaking, you're paying for it.
You're paying for it, exactly.
Hint, hint, you know, this ring, make sure you check for leaks in your irrigation system.
Anyone in the public have questions or comments on this one? Guess you could have guessed it. Someone with a leak?
My experience with leaks. My real question is, it sounds like the village is going to be somehow proactive in, in monitoring, you know, an excessive amount of water being used by one individual. I was wondering whether or not anything has changed since, you know, our, our issue to be able to do that, so I can almost sleep a little bit, not worrying about, you know, the $150,000 worth of water that's going down the drain.
Can you refresh this?
I don't remember what our.
All right.
Sorry.
And it's the one originally.
We had a.
We, meaning we.
120 North Public� 屋.
Okay, 120 North, right, okay.
We had a situation where a water line coming in after the meter, immediately after the meter, there was an excessive leak that was going on for months and months and months, and it was in a, in a pit where the meter is, is red, where the actual meter is. And in fact, it went on for so long, and we didn't know it, the village didn't pick it, pick it up until we got a bill for like $175,000, and we just figured it was one of these mistakes, when in fact it wasn't. So, you know, I just don't know, I'm just trying to figure out whether or not there's now something new that's, there isn't.
No.
Okay, so the only time this is, this law would be effective is if it's leaking into somebody's house, and they know that, that it's actually leaking or something.
Well, I think what, what more commonly happens is that, is the leak is out, it could be out in the street, or in the front yard, or, you know, somewhere outside where it comes up to the surface, and it's observed by either the homeowner or by us.
Well, but in my instance, if it was before the meter, it still wouldn't have been observed.
No, that's right, no.
Because it was still in the same.
There's nothing to prevent what happens.
My question is, is there anything new that, that the village is, is trying to be proactive on?
Was that a, was that a three-month period that?
At least.
Well, I'm saying, because you could see.
It was the middle of winter also.
It gets picked up at the first reading. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
The very next reading.
You should be able to see at the next reading, there was some excessive.
Well, the engineers who designed the pit, in their infinite wisdom, put it at a high point, they put a drain, so all the water was leaking just went right down the sewer, so nobody ever knows.
Oh, no.
Had it come up, you know.
Then you would have seen it.
Exactly. So, I'm just trying to figure out if the village figured out a way, and obviously it hasn't. Yeah. Just keep changing the gasket every year, and you won't have to worry about it.
Thank you. I know we were talking about software, so people can track their usage, but it's still going to wait, you're still going to wait until a reading. We are getting better software, but it's still going to be a three-month lag.
Software is going to be for meter reading, no, the billing.
Right.
As the log in, people can look at the, you know, consumption.
Right, so they could look and say, "Hey, last time I had X amount of gallons, now I had X amount."
So, we're going to look every day at his meter.
I mean, really, it's like, check your meter well.
We've since built a meter well, and eliminated drains, so we'll know. Or sleeps in there at night.
Hi, my name is Julia Steinman, and I'm sorry I'm late, I had to pick up my son late from wrestling practice. I'm the owner of 16 North Astor Street, and I, my architect lives here, she's already here, so I hope that all went well. I'm sorry. I was just going to add that it may be worth just a public announcement or a newsletter of some sort to say, if you notice an unexcellent jump in your water consumption, you should look for a leak. I had something happen like that with a property, it was a hot water heater that was leaking into a drain, so I.
Never saw it.
I never really saw it, I was kind of behind, and.
Have you even had running toilet tanks that just run?
Yes.
Same kind of thing, so.
We do, when the readings are done every quarter, we do have analyses that we run on the readings to see if there's unusual spikes in usage, so we often pick up problems during the billing process. It's not just all on the homeowner.
Yeah.
But it's once every three months.
Yeah, three months a lot.
Yeah, that can be back and be an expensive three months.
Sure, no, I understand.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do check them when they're at a safe point by the normal consumption, as we get a report, we check it.
Anyone else on this law? Kind of most exciting.
We could go ahead and vote on this tonight?
Yeah, first I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Resolved to adopt the local law in amendment 217, water of the Urbanity Code to clarify certain provisions. I'll make a motion, can I get a second? All in favor? Next, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing, consider a local law, meaning Village Code to give the Board of Architecture review power with respect to local landmarks. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is now open?
These are really exciting laws, which is.
This is a night of.
It's not always this exciting.
Last meeting, I think it was the last meeting, the Board enacted a law for regulating designating local landmarks and providing that the ARB has to approve any change to the landmark or moving in or anything. And so the amendment tonight is really a technical amendment, it amends the ARB chapter, which gives the ARB the authority to do this, this, and this, and it adds to their authority the power to approve or disapprove the demolition, removal, relocation, exterior reconstruction, alteration, or restoration of any local landmark. Again, no change in the law, well, it is a change in the law, but it's just.
It's closing.
The name part was last meeting.
Right. Any public comment, any board comment on this?
No, this is just really closing the loop.
Yes, empowering people we want to empower. Any public comment on this?
Okay, Rich.
I'd be happy if I wasn't.
What a power to you.
So, I will make a motion to close the public hearing, can I get a second? All in favor? Resolved to adopt the local law in amendment Village Code to give the Board of Architecture review power with respect to local landmarks. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Moving along.
Next is slightly revised, it's a volunteer appointment for the face committee, a resignation from the face committee, and a resignation from RPAC. Resolved to appoint the following volunteer committee member with January 1st, December 2018, that's J.F. Ferry, and to accept with regret the recognition of William Schwartz from the face committee and from RPAC. I'll make a motion.
And also the Phil Whitney part.
Phil Whitney's not.
Okay, so cross that, right, so cross that out.
Yep.
Extend J.F. Ferry and accept the resignation of.
William Schwartz, yeah, Bill Schwartz.
Bill Schwartz.
From RPAC and from face. So, I'll make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, Bill, for your service the last couple of years. Authorizations approved contract 2018-04 with the Tarrytown Vets, Trump and Buick Corp. for Memorial Day 2018. Another very controversial resolution tonight, I think this has been the same since the Trump and Buick Corp. were founded in 1932.
1789.
Anyone have any questions or comments on this?
But spring will come.
Will come, yes, we're already booking a Memorial Day ban, that's great. Resolved to approve a contract between the Village of Irvington and the Tarrytown Vets, Trump and Buick Corp. for musical services, 2018 Irvington Memorial Day Services and Parade on Monday, May 28, 2018, in the amount of $1,300. And through authorization, Village Administrator executes said contract. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Award of contract for low water service tank improvement.
So, I'm not going to explain the technical of what this is. Jimmy Englishbee's going to be here around eight, you can ask him then, but in all seriousness, I don't know all the engineering reasons behind this, all I know is this is an important project that was previously approved in a capital budget. The project was designed by our engineers and went out to bid. The prices came in a little bit better than we expected, but nothing that's too low that would be alarming, and the low bidder is being recommended. It's a good contractor, ELQ, that we've worked with in the past, not on this type of project, but on other types.
I was going to ask, all right, so, did any of the people that we've worked on a lot of projects, there were no other, no entities that previous.
Transplant tank on Harold.
Previous contractees, trying to make my mouth work tonight.
So, we had bids, I believe, for different contractors, I think pretty much all of them we've done business, well, maybe one we haven't, but the low bidder we've done business with in other capacities, not this type of work.
The other thing I was interested in is, I save it for Jim, but I was wondering where this is actually located, is it up at the dam?
It gets up by the reservoir, yeah.
Yeah, and there seemed to be like a real jump, the first two low bidders and then the next two bidders were like really significantly more expensive. Was there any, is there any reason, rhyme or reason for that? Did they misinterpret what was being asked?
I think the high bidder did. The second high bidder, or the third bidder here, we haven't done business with, so I know nothing about them. The high bidder, we have done business with, and we successfully completed a water main replacement job down on Bridge Street, and, but I think there was, there had to be a misinterpretation, or they truly didn't have availability to do this, so they just threw a number out. I don't know, I don't know.
Pretty exact number to throw out.
Yeah, suffice it to say that it's nowhere near what our engineers expected. What our engineers expected was something closer to about $100,000, maybe a little less, ninety.
So, you had two of them around.
Yeah, and those are, again, they're from, both of those are from good contractors, and they're good numbers.
Will any of this affect the water pressure or water availability for some period of time when the work is done?
I don't know, I don't think so. I haven't heard any issues about planning for this, so.
Since it's Mark's house on Harriman Road, that'd be affected.
No, it's not like when we replaced our water tank, where there's, you know, there were issues in terms of getting by that.
You're out, ready? I need to go over and do my laundry.
Absolutely.
Showering, Tom.
Feel free to ask Jim when he's here.
Do we know when the work on this will start, Larry?
I think they can start anytime, we have the money available, and I don't think it's terribly weather dependent, so.
Great.
We'll ask Jim.
Yeah.
Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on January 31, 2018, at 11:00 AM in Village Hall as follows, contractor ELQ Industries, Inc., for basement of $79,000. Alternative 1 is less $850 for total bid, including the alternate, $78,150. King's Capital Construction, total bid, including the alternate, $800, I'm sorry, $84,500. Ventus Construction Company, $154,500. Legacy Supply LLC, $276,300, $593.50.
Fifty cents.
Whereas the Village Administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that the low bidder is in order and responsive specification, now therefore be resolved to award contract 2018-01 with a low water service tank transfer improvements in the amount of $78,150 to ELQ Industries. Through authorization, the Village Administrator to execute said contracts. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Obviously, this has been reviewed by both Jim and by Mary Ann, or?
The engineers have a memo attached, yeah, the engineers have reviewed all that.
Approval of easement for parking with Hudson House Tennis Corporation?
Feel free to say something if you'd like, but I'll introduce this. So, the practical side of this is that down at the Hardsley-on-Hudson train station parking lot, where the village has a considerable amount of parking for commuters, there are parking spaces along the east side of the parking lot, which are up against essentially a retaining wall, and I think a slope of some sort that belongs to Hudson House. The Hudson House, in the course of a variety of conversations we've been having about that area of the village, in terms of the pathway and other things, the Hudson House had a survey which showed that the front four or five feet, maybe, of those parking spaces that the village currently uses are actually on Hudson House property. At the same time, and this is where if you feel like saying anything, you can, but.
I got the survey.
Yeah, I mean, it's all attached to the agenda here, but at the same time, Hudson House has an area near the entrance to their garage in the back of the building there, where they would like to construct, not construct, but to stripe out five or so parking spaces, thank you, and if they were to stripe them out right now, the rear end of those vehicles by about a few feet would be hanging on to village property, so we're doing a little swap here, basically, the area, it's a mutual correction of this situation. So, I think the area technically that the village is obtaining the use of is bigger than the area that Hudson House is, but they're being good neighbors about it, and so it's being done, this is where Mary Ann can chime in, but it's being done through the, some sort of a mutual easement.
Yeah, when Larry raised this with me, I guess about six months ago, my initial suggestion was just do a land swap. We're talking about 167 feet of Hudson House property, no, village property, and 840 feet of Hudson House property that the village would get, and the land swap seemed to make sense, but in order to do the land swap, I spoke with the attorney for Hudson House, there's a, there's a mortgage on it, and they'd have to go through the bank and everything, was really kind of a big deal. We're doing it by easement, would not be such a big deal, so we give them an easement to use our 167 feet, and they give us an easement to use the 840 feet, it's specified that it's for parking, it's got the maintenance agreements, and it also provides that at whatever time that this agreement will terminate when the land swap happens, which will probably be when the Hudson House refinances. I don't know when it's going to be, but when they refinance, that can just be all. It's not that it's a big issue, but you know what it's like. If the bank doesn't, they got the mortgage over a certain amount of property, and they know what you're giving up part of the property, so. So, there's all about, so.
I'm just visualizing this, this.
Yes.
Do you want to?
I know, I see the map.
Yeah, here, so look at it now, let me try to explain it. Look at the one that's blown up a little bit more, and you see, you see the line here of the avenue, and then there's the property one, you see the property line running across?
Yes.
Okay, then over to the left, you see a little dotted, dotted line area?
Okay.
Okay, that's village, the part that's what would be a triangle is village property.
Okay, so.
And then this, okay.
That's the, those are village parking spaces, you know, that we currently have parking spaces, and that's what the five spaces.
Okay, so this doesn't affect the parking spaces now by the station that are currently Hudson Houses?
Oh, this is the.
That we used to, if those remain Hudson House, this is just the easement over the other ones on that side, in response to allowing them to bump out by the garage.
I have a whole parking space to use, and we'll have a whole parking space to use. The line was cutting right in the middle.
Okay, okay, that helps. No chance to get any of those other ones back? Just let it.
Any other questions on this? Resolved to approve the easement for parking with Hudson House Ventus Corporation, authorized the Village Administrator and Village Attorney to execute said agreement and any additional documents necessary to complete said transaction. I'll make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval grant agreement with New York State Department of State, a throughway authority?
Whoopie.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is a grant agreement with the Department of State, and actually, it's really the throughway authority, the Department of State, I think, is administering it. It's a grant from the New York Bridge Community Benefits Program. The grant is for $90,000 to fund the reconstruction or construction of tree wells along Main Street, so there's a variety of locations that are in desperate need of repair and upgrade, and these tree wells will be done in a handicap accessible way that will be done correctly to promote tree growth in these areas. So, there's a couple that have been installed back in the fall, there'll be another two that the village will install at our expense, and the remaining 15 will be funded by the grant. And this all needs to be done by July 3, 2018, otherwise we don't get the money.
So, my question about that, the bottom of the first page, this agreement shall commence on September 1, 2014, so this is, and then July 3, 2018 is the ending, so this is the final phase of a whole granting process that has been going on for years.
Right, the community benefits money, the pot of money that was set aside, which I think was $20 million originally, that was money that came along with the bridge project as a way of making improvements in the various communities that are affected by the construction of the bridge, were in fairly close proximity, but this money was available, and the money had a very, had a fixed date of authorization and a time to it that expires, and that's July 3. So, not only does the work have to be done, but the reimbursements, the payments have to be made to the contractors, and the reimbursements need to be submitted, and the money has to be sent to us in time, that's what I've been told.
Right, it says no payments.
Yes.
After July 3, so.
We're well aware of the timing, yes.
You gotta do it.
Oh, yeah.
One thing good about it is that you want to plant your trees before then anyways.
Yeah, yeah, but it's a lot of work, and, I mean, but.
So, Larry, our DPW is going to be doing this part?
We'll be using our excavation contractor to do the work. Our DPW will help in some ways, but the excavation contractor will be doing that.
And what did they learn from the installation of the first two, which looked great, but what's the experience to do it?
Well, we learned that it takes about a day per tree well. Some may be a little bit easier, some may be a little bit harder, but it's about a day, so we know how much time we have to schedule out.
We have a picture, or can anybody find out where the 15 plus the two are going to go? Maybe that's something we could.
Yeah, we haven't, we didn't submit a map with it, we described it in words, and the description that we gave is that they'll be in proximity to the central part of the Main Street, so in proximity to the Village Hall, and, you know, within a block or two of either direction. That's, they found that to be appealing, so that's what we're doing.
So, we have the flexibility within that.
So, we have the flexibility within that to say, this doesn't actually work, and do a different spot? Because there's certainly more than 15, 16, 17. I was counting them the other day.
Yeah, I plan to work with, well, Alan Richardson primarily, but anyone that's interested, frankly, to identify the locations and go from there.
That's a great $90,000, whoopie.
So, what I was asking is...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, you have someone who's contracting to cut the concrete, whatever pour, what has to be done, put those new fresh soil in. Who's actually doing the planting? Are they as well?
I don't, you know, I'm not sure whether our DPW bought the tree and planted it, I'm not sure. Last bill for the previous two, to be honest with you, I don't remember.
Because it has to do with, you know, who holds the guarantee effectively?
Yeah, I don't remember. I'll find out from Greg. I don't remember.
It would be good to get, to make sure whoever's doing the planting is kind of tree-aware rather than just concrete and dirt-aware.
Right.
Resolve to approve the grant agreement with New York State Thruway Authority to provide $90,000 for Community Benefits Program. Grant to improve pedestrian amenities, promote tourism, integrate the shared use path. Resolve to appropriate masing funds of $24,000. And further resolve to authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the provisions of the grant. Make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of contract 2018-06 for Community Coalition Coordinator. Larry, this is just a, a three-year appointment?
Yes, this is a renewal of the existing Coalition Coordinator's contract. She's an outside consultant that works with our drug-free communities coalition, which is our, essentially, our community advisory board, but a subset of that. And this is entirely grant-funded. This is the $125,000 federal grant that, per year, over five years, I think we're in year number four now, thereabouts?
Yes.
Thanks.
And has there been an evaluation of how it's been going, how effective it's been?
I'm sure there has. I can't speak to the exact mechanism on how they do that. There's a significant amount of reporting that they do back to the, to the federal government. But honestly, I couldn't recite all the details.
There are annual surveys, as we call them, of the high school, I think, eighth grade through 11th grade, maybe eighth grade through seniors.
And also part of that presentation...
I was going to say, we heard a lot about that.
...was part of what they need to do in terms of...
Remember when we were in the town hall theater?
Yeah, yeah. So, this is, is it correct to say that this is funded, but grant-funded, and we are simply approving?
The Coalition Coordinator is the equivalent of an executive director. She's the administrative support for the coalition. And, you know, she handles, she implements the wishes of the coalition. So, if the coalition decides that they want to put a program on, she's the one that procures the person for the program and handles the payment and, you know, and all the back reporting of that. And so, I would call her an executive director from that standpoint, but she's an expert in the reporting requirements of the grant and, you know, keeping us in compliance there.
I just think the title Youth Prevention Coordinator is a little inept.
Directly move.
Move directly to it.
We're keeping children out of this. Is it hire or rehire, or does it really matter?
I mean, it's, it's a whole brand-new contract, but it's a renewal in effect.
Yeah, but I guess it doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
Resolve to hire Lisa Kay Tommy as a Community Coalition Coordinator for 780 hours of work per year, at annual salary of $31,200 effective October 1, 2017, September 29, 2018. I make a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think we're actually two minutes early.
Thanks, God. We're going to put police on, I'm sorry, Ed.
If you want to ask any questions about the transfer tank, or are they... Just want to tell us about that project? We just approved it?
Basically, it's, has been upgraded since it was built. So, right now, it's like a toilet tank, it has a float in it, and it controls the valve. And it's a tool that we have a real hard time controlling the pressure. So, I've done some quick fixes to make it last, but now, we're going to redo the whole station. The grating's pretty much rotten out, so we're going to put new grating in, and new flow control valves, and a new pressure-reducing valve.
So, what does it do exactly?
Takes water from high pressure and puts it into a low-pressure system. So, it feeds all of Main Street and downtown. There's a 12-inch pipe that runs from the transfer tank, which is the reservoir, that building that you see. And an 8-inch pipe comes in, which is high-pressure, 100 PSI. It goes through this flow valve, fills up a tank, which controls the pressure downtown, the level of that tank. And right now, we can only keep it high. So, it's about 80 PSI downtown. So, the water runs through that pipe, down Harriman Road, makes a right, goes up Broadway, makes a left down Station, feeds all of downtown. So, it's mainly for downtown. Anything below, anything west of Station Road, or of Broadway, I'm sorry.
So, interesting. So, if it functions correctly, do you, does it decrease water pressure, or does it...
I can increase or decrease water pressure downtown via this tank.
If it functions?
If it functions correctly. So, that was part of the issue years back when we were losing a lot of water, was via this tank, because it was too high and it was letting water into the reservoir. So, I was able to lower it. So, it doesn't do that anymore, but I'd like to be able to control it further than what I have control of it as of now.
And is there any impact on service to the community while the repair is going on?
Not at all. Because we have, well, we have pressure-reducing valves at Station Road and at Hudson Avenue West, which feeds high-pressure into low. So, we'll be feeding through those two valves temporarily till that's totally repaired and put back online. But we have a backup, yes.
Do you know how long it'll take to do this?
I would say approximately a month and a half. Probably not with the totally shutdown, but from start to finish. It actually came in lower than we projected. So, I put about 150 aside, and I came in about 80. So...
These spring projects?
Some of that's for design, though.
Yeah, some of it's designed.
Design oversight.
But...
But the rest is going to...
It's going to be like a kind of a winter's project. We're going to start soon, because I want to do it when we're not using that much water.
Correct.
Then, we're going to redo the River View Booster Station in the spring. So, those are the water projects so far.
We'll get to the rest of the water projects, but, sorry.
Just a little teaser for later.
I could have, I could have told you all that, but I wanted Jimmy to have...
[laughing]
Yeah, exactly.
Nicely done.
Yeah, nicely done. All right. Good. All right. So, we're going to just deal with police first, and then we'll get into the water budget.
Okay.
Good. Want to just start, yeah, walking through what we've got?
Sorry, we have here the budget book for this year. So, what we'll be doing is handing, as we review each department, I'll be giving those out with holes in them, and you can head into the book. I just have a few pages to run. It's the schedule of budget workshops. That's followed then by, a spreadsheet I had given previously, by updating it to give new assessed values. I have a, you guys' assessed valuation from the town of Greenberg. It does have a slight impact by about a quarter of a percent, not, not favor. This was the analysis, you know, giving the assessed value increase. What would mean for totally at the cap, the same budget, and add approximately 2.30 percent increase. Those are just for illustration purposes. That's the tax cap, next page is tax cap worksheet. And then I have some other information from the tax cap. You can see how the growth factor in other villages, as well as how the levy growth has been over the past five years. Then, we have tabs for various departments. So, at this point, I have the police in one tab called Public Safety. So, if you turn to Public Safety, that would be the police. The budget's there in detail, and I gave a little synopsis of the increase that's been requested, and a breakdown as to what that entails.
The one thing to point out, when you see, when you see a line item on here like salary increases, those, those salary increases are only for steps, from one step to another for an employee that's not at the top grade of pay. This doesn't reflect any percentage increase across the board for, through a union contract, because there is no, there is no collective bargaining agreement in effect right now. So, that's, the last agreement expired, I believe, in 2014.
So, this is the fifth budget that we're out of contract. So, those salaries, what you see here in this budget are frozen, except for the step increases Larry pointed out, for promotions.
Brenda, on the first page of the dates...
Yes.
I think we have theater twice. And we changed theater to...
I thought I had said.
Right. So, it's only on the 22nd, not on the 15th.
Right. You know, let me just take a look. I probably printed out a new one. This may not be the latest. I'll double-check that.
All right, we can get back to that.
No, I'm here for the next one. I'm not here for the 22nd.
Oh, okay. Not here for the 22nd. Then, the theater is on the, is the next one.
I believe the theater is coming on the 22nd.
Yeah, I'm going to be here for that one.
Okay.
You'll live it to fate.
Exactly.
At this point, did you want to...
I just have some questions about the...
Schedule?
The, no, the sheet we were talking about, the different line items.
The one on the chief here. Did you want to...
Well, we can go through the questions, yes.
You want to talk down the hierarchy, like, whatever. We'll just jump in and...
Okay.
Well, no, I mean, no, we don't need to go line by line. We highlighted the items where it changes.
I'm trying to make this highlight sheet...
Highlight.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, my question was that the crossing guard has a cumulative salary increase. So, this is a person who's not in the collective bargaining?
Right, they're not, they're not collective bargaining.
And...
So, they were awarded cumulative increase last year.
Okay.
So, that was employee in the line.
There's two, two guards.
Okay. Just clarify that they're not in the union.
Right, this, yeah, but this...
Three guards, I'm sorry, three guards.
Right, and just, it's a subtle point, but the salary, the increase that's shown here is, is not for 18, 19. It's not for June 1, 2018. You haven't made those decisions yet, you know. It's, it's actually for probably, I think, two years prior, because there was a window of time where there were no raises for the non-union employees, because the CSEA contract hadn't settled. So, they were kind of going lockstep.
Okay. So, they would, these would be in CSEA?
They're not in CSEA, but they were lockstep with CSEA, yes.
Associated with.
Yes, exactly.
So, you mean, there's, there would be additional increases later after June?
June 1, there would be a proposal for an increase. We haven't settled that. We have, what we typically do in the course of the budget process is we set aside a lump-sum estimate of salary increases for both the union and non-union, and that's set aside in our contingency line. Not disclosed in detail, because you haven't made those decisions yet, so...
Any other questions? $3,000 for two physicals?
Yeah, anticipated.
New hires, that's new hire rates.
What is the word?
Software.
It's typo.
Oh, sorry.
It's, AdMID is the, is actually the name of the software package.
Right. Yeah, that's what we use for our waters, investigations. All data input into the system is through AdMID. They have requested, or, the company was sold, and now, they're doing an upgrade to it. So, what they've done is, everybody who uses the software is going to have to pay a one-time cost, I believe, of $6,000 to upgrade all of the impact software. So, we're not dealing with, it's like about 25 departments that lose impact.
So, the overtime line is increasing by $50,000?
Yeah, so that's...
What is the total overtime line like now?
There's a couple of things with overtime that we, that we have to talk about, I think, to explain how our budgeting has been. The overtime line has been significantly underbudgeted in the last three or four years. It's three or four years now. I, the, I don't know the reasons for it, but I can tell you part of the reasons.
$250,000, Larry.
I can tell you that, for example, some years, we had retirements that were, that took some window of time to replace. So, for example, in the 2016-17 fiscal year, there was a point in time where, where we actually had, we were down three officers. So, we may have been, you know, the raw overtime numbers are excessive, but on the other side, we're also, at that particular moment, we're saving on, on the base salary, because we had people that had retired, and weren't paying out their base salary. So, but it inflated the overtime line significantly. Two years ago, for example, there was an inflation of the line by the significant filming activities that we had, but that was offset by revenues. So, you know, so some of the numbers look, look pretty out of whack, actually, but even without those...
They pay for overtime.
They did, yeah. But, but the raw numbers are what you see. So, for example, if you flip the page to the first page of the detailed budget preparation report, which is right behind that little summary at the top, the second line item down, personal, personal services overtime, we have a budget of a hun, prior year budget, last year's budget of $199,400. The two prior years before that, we spent $440 and $460. So, again, significantly inflated. This year, we've already spent $316, but again, we, you know, we had, we had some vacancies at some point in time, not, not significant in this year. But now, we're at full complement, so we, you know, expect to end up somewhere in the, in the mid 300s, still having a budget of only $199. Now, some, some of that is reimbursed, just for paid jobs that there may be, but not, not a significant amount. So, at this time, we're, we're suggesting to be more realistic about the overtime budget. This is, this is the way it's operating now, with the full complement that we have, that we're recommending an increase of $50,000. It probably will still be a little bit short, but I think at this point, it's, we're trying to work, we're trying to get a little bit closer, yeah, basically.
But these numbers are all over the place, so, $250,000 includes the $50,000?
Yes.
But then, it says estimated overtime for 17, 18. Oh, that's for this year.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's...
You think it might be less? Well...
Yeah, I think it's going to be less, yeah. The chief did a projection of upcoming vacations. This is not vacation season right now, so the upcoming vacations don't look like they'll put a significant strain on overtime. So, we should be somewhere around 400.
So, how do we get from 400 to 250?
Well, there'll be some budget modifications that come through for reimbursements. We get some money back from Greenberg. The chief puts in for SWAT training. So...
How much is that? Like, what have we been getting for movies, filming?
Well, the movies, that was fully reimbursable. That year was about $54,000. But that's still, that's still resulted in, no, that, that didn't cause a deficit. There was a deficit. Each year, there's a deficit in that line.
So, are we just setting ourselves up for another deficit? I'm missing something here.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
We're trying to make the budget more realistic to the...
Right, right. We should have, we hope to have a year coming up where we're fully staffed. But, you know, if that happens, you know, we might be a little... staffed. But, you know, if that happens, you know, we might be a little bit over the 250. I'm not sure how much. It's a, it's a little bit of a crapshoot, but we're at least trying to get the budget closer.
And it says also 25K in contingency. Is that, is that carried over into next year's budget? It's still in?
It's still in there, yeah. Yeah.
So, what else drives it? Natural disasters? Kind of stuff?
Yeah. It's, it's the contract negotiations with regard to benefits, vacation time. It's sick time that drives it. It's a lot of things that drive it. We have to fulfill these obligations based upon the contract. That's where a lot of this comes in, as far as what we're forced to do, even though we try to cut back as much as we can, the best we can. There's training that has to be done. There's a lot of training that has to be done. With the new people coming in, we have to reestablish ourselves in those areas where we're now deficient. Again, that's always been a course factor.
That takes overtime?
Takes overtime, yeah. You have to have backfill. Try to do it the best way I can, as economically as possible. But in this day and age, it's, it's getting to be, well, very cumbersome and trying to attain these goals, that's for sure.
Yeah. I mean, if you have, so, for example, if you have a tour that is, happens to be a three-person tour, which is essentially your minimum, one person at the desk and two out in the field, and one of those officers has to go for training, you, you need to backfill that tour position with overtime. So, if you happen to be able to do it when there's a...
That's what we're...
A four-person or a five-person tour, then, yeah, and, and none of those four or five people are on vacation or are sick or anything like that, then you might be able to get away with it without overtime. But it's, it's a tricky balance, and that's...
It's, it's a constant balance. It's what we're always trying to do, weigh it out the best way we can.
And I assume that when there's emergency construction, water department work, you sometimes have to have an officer?
We do get reimbursed from whoever's doing the, the construction, like Connaughton. We'll, we'll reimburse this with the manpower hours.
But if it's one of our own broken mains, it's coming...
Then usually we don't unless highway requests us to be there, but generally, they don't. They usually handle their own traffic flow. So, that, that really not a course factor to us.
Chief, you said in this day and age, it's getting more cumbersome. Why?
Well, we're required to do a lot more. We're, we're required, we're required to learn a lot more at the same time.
So, training, there's demands for training?
Training is, is a big drive, absolutely. Especially now, more with crisis intervention, we have to go back and train guys that never, weren't exposed to that before. And that's, we have the opiates crisis that's going on also. We need training to do with that with Narcan. I mean, everything is a driving force. Every time we do something, we need a certificate to do it. And in order to establish ourselves as credible and avoid any liability, we need to get and obtain these certificates.
Is the training usually in Westchester County, or does somebody?
Generally, it's in Westchester, at the police academy. Sometimes we have to go out, out of zone, because that's where the school's located. And, and again, we just sent officer youth up to the DARE program for two weeks. That was upstate New York. So, there, there can be travel time involved, and, and it's a two-week program, which makes it even more. Now, you have to fill those two weeks that she's not here. But I think we did a pretty good, this, hopefully, this time around, and tried to avoid as much overtime as possible. But the flu season doesn't help either.
Big piece.
I hope those physicals include flu shots.
Well, those aren't the physicals that we're getting, unfortunately. Although, I could say, but probably could use them. These are physicals for no hirees.
No, I know. But it would be good to have...
Yes, right.
And this is, obviously, they're expensive, because you're getting a full battery.
Correct.
Test. And because they're not hired yet, insurance doesn't cover this.
Uh, no.
So, we have to pay for it.
Right. And, and in case you're interested, we offer the flu shot for free to all of our employees, and not mandated, of course, but we, it's offered for free.
All right.
It's free at CBS.
So, the 98, 957 represents a 3.21% increase.
Oh, and back to last year, the overtime, with all the budget amendments, the overtime was over by 200,000. That was our shortfall.
Yeah, but again, last year, last year, at one point in time, we had, we had...
Two people, maybe three.
Two people, and then there was a third later in the year. So, that were, that had retired and were yet to be replaced. And even when they're, even when they're replaced, there's even more, there's still a window of time where they're not useful to us, you know, while they're, while they're doing their training.
And the potential always exists for new retirees approaching us. This guy...
Yep. We'll see.
Patty and I have a question about ammo. Actually, she made me ask, because she was, I assume we're not actually discharging weapons, that amount of ammo. This is for firing range and so on?
Yeah, this is firing range ammo. It's not, it's not full, full gear ammo. It's, it's definitely range ammo, which is a difference.
Seems like a lot of sleepy town.
Ammo's expensive, too.
Yeah.
It's not cheap, that's for sure. And again, they need to qualify.
Oh, great. They have to qualify.
Larry? You got a question?
Well, I was just gonna, going back to the tax rate summary page at the very front. So, looking at the overall percentage increase for this year, you model three different budget numbers, right? One is flat, one is max, and one is sort of in between.
In between, right. And then what in between would give us the ability to increase our levy by 693,000.
And that in between is a 2.3% increase?
It was 2.3. It was just really a random number. Yeah, it was...
So, it wasn't indicative of any overall budgeting?
No. What I had given out then was, let me turn to the... But I gave out what increases for, in the budget that you have, are the CSEA, CSEA increases, non-union, in the event the police settle, the medical, vet service, new occurring taping, retirement, and those items that we foresee are pretty much the given for next, given expense increases for next year. That came down to 476,000 right there. A big chunk of that was, was actually medical.
Right.
That was a huge one, right. So, if 476, you know, thereabout is our given budget increase, and this one illustrates 693. You have that, that difference to make up 2.3%. This kind of frames the discussion as to how much we can increase on top of those given expenses and come in somewhere about 2%.
Well, it seems to me this is a good opportunity and a good time to try to get the overtime line to be realistic. I mean, that seems to be the biggest difference, that this is a time to do it, so. I guess I'm concerned about something that we don't have enough information about, which is risk planning. I think that the general trend is going to be for worst weather, especially in the hurricane seasons, but also in terms of the frequency and strength of things like thunderstorms during the summertime. So, I'm concerned about how that, going forward, we should sort of keep our eyes out on that, because, you know, it may end up requiring more police presence for, you know, safety, public, public security than in response to an event that's out of our control.
Spell it, if we do get FEMA money.
That's bad enough, right?
It's the announcement quite so bad, wasn't it? I guess, I guess.
Right.
Power lines down along, along Broadway for a few days. You know, that's like some of those kinds of incidents, which we've had recently in the last few years, so.
Halloween.
Halloween.
Both occurred.
Oh, that you meant to... Overtime officers going out collecting candy.
No, no. That was down with the power lines from the snowstorm.
No, from the snowstorm, yeah. 2011.
So, so Larry, there's always kind of the, the two pieces, the, the costs and the, and the revenues. It does seem that with our enhanced enforcement, I know that New York State does well from it as well, but do we have additional revenue on the court side? I feel like we should, we do.
Yeah, no, no question about it. As a matter of fact, in a recent, I don't have it in front of me, but in a recent Friday folder, probably two weeks ago, I put in some statistical information that was passed along, happened to be passed along to the traffic committee, because we'd met and discussed it with them, and I thought it would be helpful for the board to see it. So, there is a definite trend upwards. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head. I could probably look it up, but, you know, it, it wasn't the stated goal to, to increase revenues by deploying your traffic officer.
No.
But it is certainly a byproduct.
Exactly.
You know, it's, it's a real number, and that's a number that will be reflected elsewhere in this budget when we look at our, our estimated revenues, which is not necessarily for tonight's discussion, but it's, it'll, it'll be in there, actually.
Do you remember if, if it was increasing parking enforcement revenue as well, or was it mostly traffic?
It was, the, the overall revenue went up. I don't believe that it was attributed to parking. I believe it was attributed to the moving violations. But I didn't take separate reports for that, because the conversation we had, the context of it was, was on the moving violation side. But we certainly can get reports on a monthly basis on that.
The prosecutor's bill's on double.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, just we giveth and we taketh away. The other, the other side of that is that, is that we are spending more on our prosecutor. We, we pay on an hourly basis, and...
So, he's collecting fines or...
No, no, no. He's working on our behalf to prosecute the, the various cases, and there's a lot more of those cases. So, he's doing a lot more work. So, it's a, it's a complex, it's a complex formula, so, yeah.
They get a little, just money, essentially. They get asked to get it in.
Is the prosecutor a cost center?
You know what I mean, at some point.
Well, the prosecutor is, is one of the cost components in dealing with all of the various tickets. Obviously, the traffic officer is, is generating a significant amount out in the field, but the, it's also generating a lot more work for the prosecutor who's paid hourly. So, I mean, we'll be factoring that into this, this upcoming budget, for sure. So, I still think we're, we're net positive, even if we're doubling the prosecutor's salary.
Well, we are, we are, absolutely.
Yeah. But we're, we're definitely net positive as far as the relationship between the increase in fines and the cost of the prosecutor.
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking, trying to offset some of the overtime increase.
Yeah, there's, there's some. It's, it's, again, I can, we can get the numbers out.
I can get that, right.
Yeah.
Get it right now, but...
Yeah, that's fine.
Because we're trying to keep it at around 2% increase. You know, we got to find, like, kind of the other, the yin to the yang here, so.
I think what we'll do is, is, you know, we'll, we'll review all the numbers again, and then kind of put in each departmental request and what it is. So, it's kind of like a, like a menu, so to speak, where to try to balance what we're trying to bring in the budget at and the departmental needs. So, we'll come up with a list at some point.
No, I mean, I think every year, the police budget takeaway is that it's all manpower.
That's where it all lies.
So, it's, you know, there's, I mean, we can say, hey, maybe spend 2,500 on physicals rather than 3,000, and it doesn't move the needle, you know. Like, picking over the cost of ammunition doesn't help us, yeah. Like, it's...
It was better for me to ask.
It's, you know, it's, it's all about, you know, managing the overtime and, and that sort of thing, so.
Well, we often deploy now, right?
Yes.
Yes. I hope we stay there, but, yeah.
Anything can happen.
Take care of yoga. Yeah, stay very flexible.
The total number of police officers right now is...
22.
22, thank you.
That includes you, the lieutenant?
That includes everybody.
That's the whole crew.
Myself included.
Yeah, but you can look, right, to your point, 3.1 million is the entire recommended police budget, and over 2.6 million is salaries and overtime, yeah.
There's also a page, a worksheet, that gives, you know, the different offices and their salaries, like, the department for holiday pay, longevity, COVID allowance, crossing guards, and parking enforcement. So, it is laid out in the last page of those pages that I gave you.
Right, right.
Step increases.
That's great, very, very detailed.
So, you know, each number has a lot behind it already, you know, that we've...
Super holiday.
Oh, super holiday means, a super holiday would be a Christmas or a Thanksgiving.
Great name for it.
It's a kind, it's a contractual provision. I'd be happy to explain it to you anytime.
It's like, you eat a lot. It's a super holiday.
Right.
That second column where it says police retirement with yeses, those are people who are eligible?
That's the last I've updated. I don't know if it's accurate as of now.
Since 2014, we've had five retirements.
I don't think there's anyone else lower down.
I'd have to take a look at it, but at one point, we're almost...
If you take a look, it's on the back, the last page was...
I have it.
I gave you...
Yeah, it's on there, but anyway.
Yeah, chief had.
Going down for myself, one, two, eight, four, five, six, nine, ten, nine. Got approximately nine offices.
Yeah, there's no more than one, I guess, I did.
Yeah, about nine. They're eligible. At one point, we were, well, we were above that. We almost had, almost 12 that were ready to go, so. And this is what happens when you go through personnel changeovers, too. There's a lot, you know, that nine, hell, if you can go, not that they're going to go all at once, but the possibility does exist that they can. Not that it's going to happen, but if you lose two or three a year, that definitely always puts you at all. And you have to start from scratch with the new officer coming in. That's why, one available, if I can get a transfer, makes it help a lot easier as far as trying to train that individual from scratch, basically, hiring somebody who's already trained. Simplifies some of the problem, but it's not the resolve to the problem. There, chief.
Okay, you're off. Try to save money, whoever you can.
Certainly will, sir. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Take care.
You're welcome.
And you're off.
Oh, Jimmy, I'm sorry. I should have given you this before.
Here's your budget.
Please explain.
That's not how it works, just for record. There's a tab there, yes, that's a tab.
Water sewer?
Maybe just put in front of advice. She's in the wrong spot.
Did you want to lead into any of this, Larry, or analysis?
Yeah, so Jimmy can certainly talk about the real nitty-gritty operations stuff, but what, what, one of the things he doesn't deal with is water purchases and contractual obligations for that. We, as you probably know, we are supplied our water indirectly from the city of New York, but directly from the town of Greenberg. And the, Greenberg operates a pump station at, and, in Rumbrook Park, and we helped fund part of the cost of construction of that pump station, and it supplies us with water from the Catskill Aqueduct. The, we also, so we pay Greenberg for every gallon that gets pumped here, that we sell to our residents. So... So the, the cost of water here is driven by two factors. One is the cost of water that Greenberg has to pay to the city of New York if that goes up and, and then any cost increases that they have internally, the staffing that they staff the plant with, the cost of electricity, whatever other operational items to run the plant. And so we have an operating, an operating history with how much water we buy depending on weather and whatnot and how much that's going to cost. But what we don't know is at this point in time, we don't exactly know how much the city of New York is going to raise the rate to upstate customers and, and we don't exactly know the budgeted number from the town of Greenberg. So we're making an assumption that, and we think it's a reasonable and conservative assumption of a cost increase for the cost of our water of about 5%. New York City has had considerably higher increases than that, but I think the indications now are that it should be at 5% or lower. Add that to some other cost increases with the town of Greenberg and we should be, you know, using an estimate of 5% for the cost of water. That's probably the biggest component that's listed on this sheet. There's a summary sheet of the various cost increases.
We have that, that's followed by your analysis.
Very first page, yeah. So, yeah, and there's some detailed analyses here, but suffice it to say that the, the cost of water is the single largest driving factor. The rest of it, you know, the, I mean, Jimmy can talk to his staffing, but we're not at this point recommending any changes in staffing. His department is fully staffed and highly experienced and that's not changing. The only thing that, that would change would be the salary increases and we do have a, we do have a union contract that's in effect, so we are able to reflect what those actual costs would be. So.
Can we go through these line items?
Sure.
What worries me a bit is that this again is, and you know, I'm not saying it's good or bad, but it's, you know, sort of way, for this department's way above our target, so. And I know that certain departments are going to be high and others can be low, but that means that others are going to have to be lower, you know, so.
Well, this is an important tax, lovely.
Yeah, that's the water rate.
Water rate.
Yeah.
Yes, the water rate. So what I did on the analysis, well, so we're recommending to cover the cost, it would be a 4.75% increase in the water rate.
So basically, I mean, in developing this budget, the, this list here identifies the areas of increased costs that we see. And again, they're based on estimates right now. Hopefully, you know, as this budget process goes along and gets us to April, that we can have better numbers. But right now, this is what we see.
We're happy to say that we did analysis for year-to-date on water sales and purchases and we're ahead by $15,000, so it shows that we're at the correct pricing for the water consumption.
Right, and, you know, and also by way of background, and I don't, I'm not sure that I can recite the exact numbers, but this, this fund has historically had a very large deficit that came about in the early 2000s. The deficit reached a peak of about $1.7 million if I recall correctly. Through some legal action and settlement and, and correct water rate pricing by previous boards of trustees, the deficit has been reduced down to what is being projected now, Brenda.
It looks like.
The end of this fiscal year, our projection.
To decrease our fund balance right now by another $120,000.
Down to?
Two seventy-four.
Down to, what's the?
Two seventy-four?
Two seventy-four it was, and then for that comes the 120.
Well, so down into the 100s range.
This is amazing.
Right, so.
And then 10 years ago.
Yeah, I know, it would be.
Do more peer villages to the south and east of us also get their water from the town of Greenberg?
No, I don't think so, yeah.
So ourselves and Elmsford are the only ones that actually get water from Greenberg.
Others get it directly through contact with New York.
Yeah, a lot of them have their own pump stations, you know, plants. Of course, you have United Water which runs a bunch of towns. You have Westchester Joint, which is like five or six towns together that share plants. So it all depends on where you are in Westchester.
So, so the context of this.
Everybody is buying it from somewhere.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
I think Carrington pulls some from the lake, which is your cheapest option, is pulling from a drone reservoir. Yeah. I don't think so. For sure, they may.
Anyway, that's, that's for another time.
We're not pulling from the reservoir anytime soon.
No.
Could you remind me, you know, about the Rumbrook, Rumbrook pump station? That's related to the original cost of it? What is the 45,000 under that line?
No, that's, that 45,000 is an estimate of the increase in the cost of water that's pumped from Rumbrook to us. That's, that's where, that's our primary source of water. We pump, you know, 50 something, I don't know how many, millions of gallons a year.
Three hundred and something.
Oh, 300 something, I'm sorry, 50 a quarter, I was.
So that's the, that's the cost of water, not the cost of something about this pump station?
No.
It's just on that line?
It's coming from Rumbrook.
Coming from there, okay.
It's the water that's pumped through the station.
You do remember that back in the day, that was the settlement was to pay for that, our cost, we're paying for that pump station, but that's all paid for.
Right, okay, because that's what I'm mixing up in the past.
No, the settlement really was about water purchases with Greenberg. Yeah, Mary Ann knows, that was one of her initiations. No, the cost, the cost of construction, the cost dates, the pump station was built back in the late 80s, early 90s, but never, didn't not come online until the early 2000s. When it eventually came online, there was a significant lag in billing and then there was an attempt by Greenberg to catch up and it spiraled out from there, but the settlement was over that catch-up period.
So when we see 45K, 45,000, that's, is that projected increase in water cost or increase in water use or combination?
Just cost.
The cost.
It's based on, it's based on an assumption of flat usage from year to year. So it's strictly based on the cost.
But do we see that happening? I mean, is there flat usage from year to year or does it?
No, it varies depending on weather conditions, but, but again, this is where, from a budget standpoint, we can't, of course, we can't predict future usage based upon weather variations.
No, but construction, I mean, you've got more construction and up on Heritage Hill and you've got Marker Ridge coming online next year.
Right.
So.
Yeah, no, we'll make.
So if expenses were to go up, then our revenues should also go up.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And now it's still neutral.
The issue is.
The lotto's property, they're all going to be separately metered, each one of those units.
Right.
So we're going to.
So the revenue will be there.
Probably go track it directly.
The issue is, is your, historically what our issue has been, going back to the days of our deficit, is, is your, is your rate structure correct to account for usage within a range of variation? Now, we can't say that, you know, if usage doubles from today, that our rate structure will, will cover it or if it goes in half from today, it'll, it'll cover it, because there are fixed costs that need to be covered and that, that makes the equation very complicated. But from where we are now with the types of variations that we see seasonally from year to year, the rate structure that we have has shown that it's covering our costs and then some to bring down the deficit. At some point, when we work our way out of a deficit situation and into a reasonable and healthy surplus, which we hope to do in, you know, the coming few years, we can get to the point where that rate structure no longer needs to kick off a, an annual surplus, you know what I mean? But right now, it's kicking off an annual surplus because we need to work that deficit down. So, but we're, we're at a point where that structure is in place and, you know, frankly, and I'm not, this is not to tell you exactly how to, how to adopt your budget, but the fact is, is that if we have all these increased costs that we've identified and they're, they're costs that are largely out of our control tied to union contracts or water purchase contracts and you don't raise your rates to account for it, you're going to be in the same position you were years ago. So we're trying to present it in a responsible way to continue that. And that's what this is about.
Bob, I thought you were going to get at water conservation, just trying to get the village and residents to use less water.
Yes, you know, again, but ours, we have put, you know, we did put out something to all, you know, the water bills about conservation, but you know, you can't do it just once. You have to have, you know, ongoing education and I come back to, we had a, an active or proactive green policy task force, for instance, public education about water conservation and about noise abatement and other things like that and, you know, leaf mulching and now food scrap compost. All that stuff should be keys to ongoing public education and outreach.
Now, interestingly, and I.
Down reaching.
I haven't studied the multi-page report that we were looking at from New York City. New York City does a very detailed rate analysis across their in-city customers and then their upstate customers, which is what we are. And they make certain assumptions about future usage and their assumptions seem to be like, you know, tailing off about a percent per year in terms of usage. That's the assumption that they seem to go by, just on the basis of, A, past history, but also future, the fact that, that more modern equipment and devices use less water, just generally speaking.
So the city will say, uh-oh, less water usage, we have to increase the rates to be able to still make.
Well, well, yeah, and that was, that was going to be my point, but I didn't want to get into a debate about it, about the good and the evil.
Right.
The, the reality is, is that as you, as you push for water conservation, it actually makes the finances look a little bit worse because.
Fixed costs or something.
Yeah, when we sell water, we make money and when we don't, we don't, so. Because there's fixed costs, you know?
It's a larger, then you go to the discussion about, you know, like the whole, the whole change looking at what is corporate, proper fiscal management where people are looking beyond just the quarterly, you know, bottom line, but they're looking for the community, communal environmental impacts about, so the village has to be able to function as a village in terms of.
No, but look, I mean, if there's.
Environmentally speaking.
If you make, if you make certain shifts in your culture, like significantly increased education to try to drive down water usage, you can have to adjust it in the rates. It's a, it's a double edged sword is my point. So, but that, you're the ones that get paid to make that decision, you know? If you want to, if you want to push water usage down, that's fine, but we need to account for it.
But probably people, I would suspect that people who are motivated by a public education program to limit their use of water for environmental purposes aren't expecting a, you know, half of 1% rate decrease. I mean, I don't think that's the.
Right, right, right. Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying.
Also, it's preventative in the sense of it, it reduces the growth of water requirements for the New York system itself, you know?
Sure.
If you, if all the communities are trending down, then they don't have to quite get into panic mode about where the next aqueduct is going to be built or whatever.
And that is the way it seems in their analyses, that, that they are looking at the downward trend.
During the wintertime, we use a half a million gallons a day. During the summertime, we use 1.2 million gallons a day and most of it is irrigation. So, you know, when I go and see people, I talk to them about water, you know, moisture sensors, because you get a lot of water bills, you know, people call, oh, my water bill's really high. So our new meters give me the ability to go back 96 days and give them a chart of their usage every day.
Yeah.
So when they say I have a high water bill, I can go there and say, well, your sprinkler turned on at 5:00 in the morning and it turned off at 8:00 and you used X amount of gallons.
And it rained that day.
Yeah, right.
Well, a lot of times on time around, you see, you know, it's raining and everybody's sprinklers are on. So, you know, the real driving force behind our bills during the summertime are the usage is sprinklers, so.
So it's more than double.
And a lot of people don't realize how to set up their sprinkler. They have a guy that comes, sets it up and then when they get the high water bill, then I step in and then I tell them, you know, water every other day, water less and longer.
There could be a leak in their system.
There could be a leak, like the other day, the guy insisted there was no leak. As soon as I walked in the house, I looked at the meter and said, there's a leak. So we went upstairs to the toilet.
It was running, yeah.
So, you know.
And.
Everybody uses water different. When I brush my teeth, I turn off the water. Some people leave the water running, some people shave, they leave the water running. I mean, it's, it's really habits, you know?
But in terms of the summertime, I mean, again, habits, but, you know, a lot of people don't understand and landscapers and the, and the irrigation companies don't really make any effort to train customers how to shut off the, or change the clock for, the irrigation clock for a change in weather conditions or when you suddenly get a dry spell or suddenly get a wet spell. So yes, those automated sensors are really important, but changing the grass type is also, you know, that's a longer range thing, but if you go to a grass that's more drought resistant, then you don't have to pile so much water on it.
Right.
Cornell's got a lot of great information about that.
People love their green grass.
No, 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 but even things like rye.
Right.
Right? It's green, but it just requires, it has much deeper root systems and requires a lot less water during periods. That's public education.
Well, I think.
So could I ask one question before we go off? Because I know we're trying to close up shop here, but what was the water administration increase about?
It's salary.
Oh, that's you?
That's me.
Uh, no, it's actually not. No, it's the clerk's office.
No, I'm down.
No, it's the clerk who is.
Nice try.
It's our high face trustee.
As a line item.
Water administration? I think.
Water administration, they use.
I have a.
I thought that was the billing.
I thought it was me too at first. Administration is.
Okay.
And then down, we're on the next grouping, that's personnel.
Right.
You see, the next page. I have it itemized there, number 8340, that 100, I have water department salaries at a title, the allocation from general fund. So the allocation from my office is actually 92,000, let's open with 92,000. So that's administrative cost to take care of all the billing, payroll, bills. So we allocate, have parts of people's salaries.
What, what percentage of people took up the offer to do their water bills by a direct?
Had a good response.
I mean, I'm one.
I don't know the current percentage, but people jumped on that right away. I'm going to say it's definitely 30, about 30% maybe, I'm going to guess, I'm not really sure. I have to look at this.
It doesn't, doesn't that decrease your administrative cost?
We still have to render, the meters get read, we still have to do that. What it does help on is there's fewer bills that we manually have to process.
You still have to read the results to.
Analyze it and. Right. And send a, and send a statement. Where it assists us, let's say in that bill, those accounts, let's say it's 50 accounts on each bill cycle, you know, those will come in as an EFT electronically and that gets uploaded. So that's a time saving and those bills, you don't have to physically enter as a page.
So yeah, they're going to be getting.
So it would.
They close accounts however and forget about the EFT, then they bounce and then we have to contact them.
So it might, I don't know.
That's something we're certainly encouraging and our new software is going to encourage people signing up. They can sign up on their own to do auto debits.
So we should continue to encourage that.
Absolutely, yeah. And I think people do like that, that they don't have to remember to pay the bill, they have to pay a late fee. So whenever people have a late fee and they ask to have it waived for whatever reason, we give them a direct deposit form.
Are we still seeing planning on the software showing comparison to the year previous?
Yep, that was a large driving component to change.
Is there any way to see online? Is there any way to see online your current, like, your current usage, you know, like, to the day, for the, for this billing period?
Not to the day, no, not in the software. Our software goes back-
Kind of like a portal, you know?
Portals here.
Yeah, no, they're not, the, the meters are not real-time. The readings are done through radio transmitter, but only-
You got to drive by.
By, drive-by, or, you know, in, in the vicinity, right?
That would be a different system to have real-time. You'd have the cellular or something.
Get on your Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi.
That'll be the next meter upgrade in 25 years.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Not often we, I think there's too many municipalities bragging about their water departments. Good job, guys.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Jim.
You're welcome.
Come in more frequently. Tell us, give us a good story about it.
Right.
I got a whole list of things.
Every, once a quarter, a little water story.
Maybe we should get, like, some advanced on water re-brakes.
Yeah.
We have one on Thanksgiving, so we're here from eight o'clock in the morning until midnight.
That was fun.
Yes, we, we did talk about that one.
Yeah, we did, yeah, that was a-
That was an experience.
That was a super holiday.
Second on in 21 years.
You know, this isn't a, this isn't a personnel review or anything like that, but I, I just want to point out that, in addition to handling the water department, Jim has ready, was ready and willing to handle oversight of the Station Road culvert, which really doesn't have a lot to do with the water department.
Yeah.
Water runs through it.
And he also, he also is really general contracting the Palsy Pond Dam, lower dam-
Breaching project.
Breaching project. And, again, it's not necessarily water department, but he knows dams pretty well, so.
Thank you.
But anyway, so.
That's great.
It's a huge help.
If you get a chance to go by, check out the spillway. We rebuilt the whole spillway from the upper dam to the lower dam, so it looks like it originally did back when it was built.
We're waiting until it's 60 degrees, and then we'll take you out.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah, good.
Maybe not this week.
Well, clear out, all the trees are cleared out. Hopefully, in about three weeks, we're going to start back up and hopefully complete, complete that project. So, it's great.
There was a pending issue. I don't remember if it involved Jim or not, but I remember we were talking about the trespassing around the reservoir. And was that something that was-
We're going to, I think the, the code is, is okay on that topic. It's a matter of upgrading the signs. So we have to just go ahead and evaluate.
Okay, so that's nothing-
Well, no, I mean, it is under our control, but we did talk about that, the trespassing.
Absolutely.
You know, as far as we see in the code, it looks like the code-
Overruns water supply.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an issue.
My people can walk across to-
Yeah.
The property without being chased.
Yeah, but that's not what the signs say. So we have to, we have to fix that.
Okay.
We don't chase them out of there now, as it is. It's just if they're swimming or they want to launch a boat into the reservoir-
That's not allowed.
Or something like that, then we don't allow that. But other than that, I mean, people have their dogs in there swimming, and it's fine. So, yeah, yeah.
On a leash.
Just kidding.
That's another ongoing issue, but, I mean, you know, it's what it is, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks very much. Stay home.
Thanks.
Just the, the usual reports.
That's right.
That'll be well on the agenda. Okay, so, tree commission is happy, very happy about the grants. Looking forward, I know, to working with the village to get the, get everything moved forward. And Alan just wanted me to point out that, rather than waiting, it's better to probably try to put trees on order now to have them in the chute, so that the growers are, know what, you know?
More importantly, is ordering the grates. Those have a-
Oh, those have a long lead time, yeah.
They're being watered tomorrow morning.
Yeah, okay.
But yes, we'll, we'll take care of the trees as well.
Don't forget about the lead time to make sure you get the trees dug and all that kind of stuff. And they're, of course, they, they are looking for volunteers to work on the tree commission, and it meets twice a month on, I want to say, wow, Tuesdays? Yeah, Tuesdays in the evening. And then a word from the traffic calming committee, just to mention that, and I had this experience just a couple nights ago when it was kind of drizzly. Just remember, you know, the whole walk-safe initiative to, you got to be very careful with visibility, seeing pedestrians, but also pedestrians, it's a two-way street in a sense. You got to take some responsibility for your own safety. You know, when, when it's drizzly and foggy at night and you're wearing all black and you don't have anything reflective or not a light, it's very hard for people to see you. Even if you think the street and the crosswalks are visible and lit well, it's not that way when you're driving the car from inside looking out. So, please, you know, especially when the weather gets bad, take a light with you or something, so that people can really see you when you're trying to cross the street.
Two people walking up River View. And they're all, I mean, they're like, they're burglars. They're like, black hats, like, everything. And you, you almost couldn't see them as they were on, especially when it was foggy out.
I mean, like I said, I had an incident where I had to really slam on my brakes on Main Street. And I was not speeding, but it was just the weather conditions, the, coming out of the corner. And it's like, if you're pedestrian, it really is important to stop and make sure that car has stopped for you and, and before you really cross out into the lane to travel.
Yeah, you don't want to be in the hospital and say, I was right.
Exactly. I think we just forget about how much, when you're inside the car, the visibility is different than when you're outside. So, so anyways, the, the traffic committee is just encouraging you to, again, stay reflective or stay lit. And finally, I just wanted to make a mention of-
Stay lit.
Well, you know what I mean.
You said it, we didn't.
Read a snicker.
No glowing red noses.
Too much fun over there.
So, the other thing is, we had a presentation the, the last work session about the food scrap recycling program. And I just want to point out that I bought my food scrap recycling kit from the village, and I think there's a couple left, maybe. And actually made my first drop-off this weekend over at, at VF Macy. It's a little bit hard to find where the area, where the drop-off is, but once you find it, it's pretty clear. It's easy to do.
Do you know if they've done anything about drop water at the farmer's market?
They did, yes.
I've been told that that's happening, yes.
Yes, I talked to Ann about that. She had, I think she said there, there were, I don't know, 15, 20, X number of people actually brought their scraps to her.
That's great.
And at the same time, she was selling the, the, what do you call those?
Kits.
Containers, kits.
Yeah.
And she sold out all the ones she had. I brought her two more from MJ Wilson, and she sold one more. So, there's definitely interest.
And Larry, is the village selling these kits as well?
Yeah, go to Karen.
That's where, yeah. I think we only have the, two, two more up there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, I didn't get a free one.
No.
So, but the kits are good, because you get the, I guess they'll do the sales for 20 bucks. You know, you get the, the smaller pail you keep under the sink, and you get a larger pail that you probably keep out in the garage or somewhere, that can hold multiple bags worth of stuff in it. So you don't have to, every time your sink one fills, you don't have to run to the drop-off point. You can actually make it to the next farmer's market. And the one critical thing to really keep in mind is to use compostable bags. You cannot use plastic bags. You have to use specially-made bags that are considered to be compostable. You do get a set of about 20 of them when you buy the little kit for 20 bucks. But you can also get additional rolls of bags through, I guess, through Greenberg? Through the nature center?
I think so, yeah.
They're supposed to, when the drop-off place is manned, you're supposed to be able to buy them there. When I went by, it was not manned or womanered. And no one else staff there. And so that's it. Thank you.
I have the answers to some of those questions, because I've been working on the team. Can I answer?
Please do.
Okay.
Okay, so food scrap collections, we, yes, we are planning to go to every single farmer's market and kind of, you know, keep that, that going. So we've been sort of trading off. In terms of the availability of kits, we assembled 170 more, because the first batch, the batches that we assembled already sold out, which is neat. But the cool thing is, you actually don't have to buy a $20 kit. You can use your own stuff from home. But you can still buy the, the compostable bags for just two, two bucks a roll with the, the Greenberg. And it's actually not manned at the actual garbage cans, but actually in the administration building near it. So, should be able to, during business hours, get them. So even if you major at home, you could buy the $2 compostable bags.
Which one's the administration building?
It's the one that's lower. Yet, so, let's see.
It's one up on the hill.
Yeah, not, not on the hill, right? Exactly. I know, I've made that mistake before, too. It's the smaller one. So, yeah. So, one other point, one other question that you have on that? Oh, the village. So we're happy to replenish if you need more, if you feel like you're getting demand. So just kind of keep MJ, Ann, or I posted.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leo.
My goodness, Mark. Yes, I'm down.
All right.
Thank you.
There are many great programs available for all ages through the Recreation Department. Please visit the website or the Facebook page to see what there is available for you and your family. As always, there's a month of meetings. The Community Advisory Board will meet on February 13th, 8:00 AM in the Senior Center. Irvington Woods Committee will meet Thursday, the 15th, at 7:00 PM at the O'Hara Nature Center. The next meeting of Recreation Department Advisory Committee is Wednesday, February 21st, 7:00 PM in the Rec Center. And the IS Executive Board is meeting Tuesday, February 27th, at 8:00 AM at the Senior Center. And the, the IS Board just asked me to list a couple of the initiatives that they've taken in the recent past in January and February. And most of these, again, are supportive within the school system, peer-to-peer support. So they had the Positive Post-it Campaign to place January 19th. The varsity boys wrestling and the girls' basketball teams hung positive message post-its on every student locker prior to mid-term. Middle School students partnered with Capri and Tony's Pizzeria on sticker shot campaign. They placed preventative messaging stickers on pizza boxes the week before the Super Bowl. And it's those kinds of things that they're doing that are really the peer-to-peer support that really makes the CAB and the IS, you know, program together that'd be very special for us. That's it.
Pizza boxes can go in the food scrap collection.
What we're recycling is a cat turd.
Ah, not if it's oily.
Not if it's not-
You're off the oil part.
That would get soaked by the-
Yeah, got it, got it.
You always eat it silk, that's the first roof in my mouth.
All right. Should I read Jim English? He's worked for the, for the, for these, these weeks. They actually worked on sewage stoppages. Artsley Avenue West, that was cleared. A sewage stoppage at Seven Irving Place cleared. And quite a few other details there.
He didn't mention coming here?
He didn't say, I came to the board.
That was a highlight.
Right. And the highway department, there was storm nine and 10. They weren't that much. Tuesday, one inch. Sunday, dusting mixed. That was, um, 2-4. So they've continued their maintenance, of course. Collapsed Catch Basin on North Broadway by River View Road.
That's it.
They replaced Catch Basin with a precast concrete basin on Fargo Lane. Was a sinkhole on Erie Street. Continuing Christmas tree recycling. Getting old.
No rest there.
Assisted the Parks Department and filling potholes. And, you know, just a word on the theater. There were two programs this weekend. A really interesting movie on Friday with a, followed by a, a local blues player. The movie was about finding some, some elderly blues singers and composers in the 60s. So it was set in 1964. It was a documentary. I was there. There was a, a great group of people stayed for the blues performance, a local man, Jim Capell. And then Brian was at the show on, on Saturday, which was a Common Ground show. So, there, there are many upcoming things. I won't go into them right now, but there's always something going on in the theater, and it's, it's really great to see the variety of things that are up there now.
Yeah, Birds of Chicago. They're-
Birds of Chicago.
Amazing, yeah, they're great.
Okay. Maybe you're going to say something about the read-aloud at the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, good, okay. Yes, we were-
All of us.
Yeah, all of us, all.
The schools hosted the World Read-A-Loud Day last Thursday. Brian was there, Connie was there, Latimer was there, Mary Janice Jinsky.
Andrew Stewart Cousins.
Andrew Stewart Cousins.
And then Dave Chiron.
My wonderful takeaway moment, I walked in with Scott Mosenthal in the new receptionist, how to spell his name.
Yeah, no, you know.
Whoa.
How quickly they forget.
How quickly they forget. But it was a wonderful endeavor.
What grade did you guess on?
Second.
Fourth.
I had kindergarten.
Yeah.
I had almost 20 minutes of questions and answers, but really it was just statements about themselves. Really amazing. Like, what's your question? I have a bike. I'm going to be six next week. Any other questions?
Well, my class was like-
I got a big hug, so people give me a big hug. I wanted to steal all 15 of them to get home.
It was, it was a great experience. Main Street School, incredible. Just the atmosphere. The kids come down, I'm taking you up to our room. And, you know, boy, talk about feeling like a million dollars.
The kids loved it. And my class was extremely patient, because the book I read, the name of which is this getting me in the world, but they had-
Warped piece.
Warped piece. I thought you read that to kindergarten, right?
They're keeping quote. And the kids had already read this and done a whole classroom project on it or whatever. But they said very intentionally. And were very engageable in talking about just some of the things about family traditions and what we pass on. And it was, it was just a terrific experience. So-
I did the mouse on the motorcycle. Do you remember this?
That's a great one.
Okay.
Well, thanks to, I think this was IS's, Intanya Hunt's Brainchild, and this was terrific. I already volunteered for next year. But it was a just simply wonderful project. Wonderful thing to do. And the library, we now have the new owner for the library building, Workforce Housing Group. And off to, I think, a wonderful start. They had a tenant meeting where they, it was handled beautifully. Really reassured tenants, talked about what the changes would be, how it would be sequenced, what, you know, what parts of the, would be handled in what order. We had a meeting where they, the administrative staff and the onsite staff came and talked about how they would be handling the transition. And then we're going to do, getting down to nitty-gritty about particularly what in our architect and making sure that everybody's working in tandem. But I think, would you agree, Larry, off to a really good start?
So far, so good.
So far, so good. That's a good thing to be able to say. Definitely so far, so good.
Yeah.
And they've been very open to meeting with, you know, everybody from the village enters interested, so.
Yeah.
Also, I'm probably the only one that goes, but there was a very good classical quartet there, and it was almost standing room only. It was on the Sunday, I guess, last Sunday. So they're, not everybody knows about them, but they are very good. They're, they're, they're a great addition for a lot of people on Sunday afternoons, about four or five a year.
That's it. What's your ministry's report?
So this is just a quick advertisement on why you should read your Friday folder.
Uh-oh.
Couple of weeks ago, I put something as simple as a meeting agenda in there. We had a conference call related to the Station Road sidewalk and the Main Street curbs project. And it looked like an agenda, but if you read through the agenda, there was a draft schedule for the project, which I thought was pretty interesting. So, I'll remind you of it.
Uh-oh.
The survey was being done a week or two ago. They're developing design alternatives within a month of when they received that survey. We expect to have some level of public involvement April, March, or April. What form that takes, I'm not sure yet. We haven't planned that out. The, we expect to get design approval from the state by May or June. Detail plans would be developed by July or August. Construction plans would then be August, September. And bidding in the winter and construction in the spring. And if that holds, it'll be a miracle.
Oh.
Very fast. But it's, at least it gives a timeframe. So we're not talking about 2022. We're talking about 2019. So that's, that's at least positive. So, we'll see. That's it.
What's your report?
We've been busy. 1099s are out, W2s are out, 1095s are out. That's for everyone's medical coverage as well. Another requirement, painted to effect several years ago. Working on budget. We'll be meeting with the new software providers in about two weeks for a more in-depth planning- for a more in-depth, um, planning session. So they'll start implementation of the program soon after that. We've been, uh, pretty busy. Also, every, we have the new federal tax tables. Uh, that's in effect. So last payroll showed those changes. So, so, oh, what, going on, there's always something going on. Every little moment.
Those are the administrative reports?
Oh. I'll look for some more confusion in the code. Clarification, you're special.
We love it.
We love it.
You know, adding our stats with, you know, legislation passed in a year. Leo, anything?
I am so sorry, I, I was, it's late. So I will be quick. Rah rah about the tree pits, because we know that trees are, are really a great thing for cooling and, and aesthetics and everything else to make our village nice, so I'm very psyched about that. I would like to, um, to, and Larry, we corresponded about this, just kind of hear or see a little bit more about the plan, particularly as it relates to the path from the aqueduct and things like that. And part of that is that I'm reminded...
The what plan?
Of where the, of where the trees are.
Oh, the where the trees?
Uh, the trees, yes, but also part of the ninety thousand grant is, you, you mentioned something about connecting the aqueduct with the River Walk and stuff?
No.
No.
I think it's visually connecting it with the trees.
They used, they used some of those words in the, in the grant document itself.
Oh.
They, they mentioned about integrating it with the River Walk and, but that honestly is just, is just grant language.
Oh.
The actual...
It was so confusing, it's in Terry Town, like, can I see this?
The actual project itself is, is the construction of fifteen tree wells, or the reconstruction, in some cases, of fifteen tree wells along Main Street, the locations of which, I reported earlier that we don't know the exact locations, but they'll be somewhere within a couple of block of window of, of area of Village Hall.
Okay. I, I'm not sure if that would include greenery of the new space around the memorial thing by the Main Street School, but that looks like a hate island to me. I don't know if that's pervious surfaces or not, but it, it seemed, it was greener before, and it's not so green anymore. And, um, and actually, and, and again, about the reminder of good design, so the old, you know, it just had, just... I know you guys have a lot of good experts on it, so I have no, no doubt the tree thing will be fine, but, um, the aqueduct, that passageway through Main Street School is like a horrendous muddy mess right now.